And I can double check on that too much if you want me to.
I, being in the business world, we're scared of...
Yeah, our health insurance group that we're with is pretty good. And it's a large enough group that I think that we have traditionally achieved some pretty good savings with them. And they're pretty aggressive about trying to keep that. You know, one of the things that we could choose to do, it's a very, very generous perk that we have here at this library, what we pay for health insurance. I know when I was here the first time, we only paid, the staff only had to pay $10 with their health insurance. Now it's up to a lot like $25. It doesn't make a difference, that would offset that a little bit. But, and right now, it's only, it's like $7.25 a month. So I did bump that up, you know, with the anticipation that we might see some increase in the health insurance costs, but not.
Yeah, most insurance will be, really, I remember what you did.
Yeah. So, but I'll take another look at that and see if I can, and I think I'm actually going to be going to our health insurance board meeting in between now and our regular board meetings. So I will see if I can get some firmer numbers and so we can have a more comfort with that Anyone else other than those? The retirement, as I said, this reflects the huge increase that we're seeing this year. And tomorrow, when you come in to sign checks, don't die. We are writing the check to the actuary for, or to CNA for this payment for this year, which will be $223,000.
It's hard to write a check.
Yes, it is.
I remember the first time I had to pay for health insurance.
Yeah, so that, and again, that's not a number that I can, that's pretty well set. We're legally obligated to pay those, pay that money. The good news, as I explained in my notes, was that adjustments to the assumptions were done this year. So in subsequent years, we should see maybe only a 2% to 3% rise in the MRF, the CNA portion. And actually, this year, IMRF, our IMRF employer portion did go down slightly, so...
That's good.
Yeah, that's always nice to hear.
Ominous, running down $5,000.
I've spoken both with Kevin before he left and with our new network administrator, Ron Friedman, who will be coming to the board meeting so he can meet all of you. At least additionally, he wants to pop in and introduce himself. This, the reduction in that budget line reflects not having to, we had some hardware purchases that we had to make, like server, we did buy some big ticket items this year that we're not going to need in subsequent, next year. And also with the hiring of Ron, who actually has a number of, latest for theater science degree, both bachelor's and master's, I believe, but also a number of certifications. He has an expertise particularly in Windows and Microsoft products that Kevin did not have. And so we outsourced a lot of that network support through, to Sickich. And our goal is that we will be able to minimize that significantly, reduce that significantly, if not eliminate it altogether. And that was a $15,000 fee. So being able to do that actually will save us a ton of money and still leaves us at a very comfortable level for any ominous software or hardware needs that we'll have, even with a $5,000 reduction.
The other question that I had earlier is databases. Do we not expect there to go up cost of living kind of raises?
We do not, and actually, Natalia and Colleen actually, and Colleen was actually in charge of the databases. And so she worked with Natalia on this budget before she was so ill she couldn't come in. And this is through context, either contractual agreements that we have with them. Sometimes they're more than one year, that kind of thing. So these numbers are pretty well set and we'll probably just take that.
And so contracts go up every year.
Right, right. So, but we're good with that. But again, very little wiggle room in that because this is pretty much what it costs us.
Is that being possible?
No, I don't think so.
I think it's impossible.
I mean, certainly if anyone else has any questions about any of their items.
Is it also?
No.
I didn't do as well on the employee end.
I don't have a lot of questions about the employee end, but you know, I can read it all.
I have a few, but not so many. Yeah, it's our own.
Nine thirty, I think.
I do that. What are we meeting here?
Yes.
So I'm going to go back to the director's report from August and just look at some pure numbers. So when I do planning on the businesses, I always look at trend lines. And our overall, and pick any line you want, but over the last year, they all tend to be trending downward. And then the totals for the last six months tends to be just kind of flat. And it's, you know, it is what it is. When I look at adult versus youth comparisons with last year, we've got two negative numbers. One's a download, and others are down six.
Were you talking about circulation statistics?
Some of this, yeah. So, you know, we're kind of, we're not going up. And I look at where some of the statistics are moving or not moving. So downloading, streaming, you know, so off-site visit bar stuff is up. I find that weird because website visits to, you know, were down compared to previous year, three and a half percent or so, but nonetheless down. Total EV, up, big. Are we looking to budget based on this switch of people using the library remotely as opposed to coming in here and, you know, inside the brick and mortar?
Well, yes, in some ways. And it's probably not very well reflected in, excuse me, the budget. And that's more just a function of where we put different things. When we look at things, when we look at, say, the book budget, for example, that includes, while it might, you know, be flat or whatever, but that includes a shift away from, you know, some shift away from print, putting money towards print resources, to putting it towards our downloadable eBooks and E-Resources. So you don't see that out here, but I see that, you know, in my internal numbers saying, okay, I know I'm giving Baker &amp; Taylor, for example, maybe $10,000 or less than I was last year, but I know I'm giving that amount of money to Overdrive so that we can purchase more eBooks because we are trying to meet that need. So some of those, those things are being addressed already, but you're just not seeing them in the way that we've got the budget aligned right now. And actually, you know, since, I'll talk about eBooks, for example, but you know, since they started kind of becoming more popular, we knew they were really here to stay because they went back and forth for a long, long time to talk about eBooks and nothing ever happened. But when it finally did start to happen, libraries, we kind of budgeted for them all over the place. And, you know, we started out by budgeting for them as a format. And so we said, okay, we'll have, we'll put them in the EV line or we'll do something else with them. And now I think most libraries have kind of gone back to the idea that these are books, they're just in a different format. So we're going to, we're going to budget, we're going to put that in the budget line that talks about what they are, not about the format that they're in. So to us, it's just a book, it's just a different format. So that money is going to be coming out of that. So you're not seeing some of that switch just because of the way that our budget is currently constructed. But the other thing in terms of like circulation stats and that kind of thing, I do think one of the trends that many libraries are seeing, most libraries, is, you know, kind of this, I don't want to say move away from circulation as a statistic, but the realization that the circulation statistic is less important now than it used to be. For example, you know, there's a lot of people in this building every day. They may not check out one thing. However, they're in here, they're using our space, they're using our meeting rooms, they're using our Wi-Fi. And so they're really using us. They're, we are serving a need. But we don't have anything on what we give you every month that counts that. So when we look at those statistics, what we're seeing is kind of a more traditional way of counting. And maybe one of the things that I'm looking at doing is revamping the statistics for next year and looking at, so we're trying to capture some of that information so that we have a more accurate way of looking at how people are using our facility, our collections, our services, our Wi-Fi, whatever the case may be. So I think some of, some of what you're seeing is we want to be paying attention to those trend lines, thinking about what that means. You know, maybe it means that we look at, do we look at keeping our collection at a certain size so that we can put more seating in? Because that's where we're seeing a need. Something like that, you know, just kind of as a quick and dirty sort of thing. The other thing I think that is really important that doesn't come out in some, the statistical reporting that we're trying to work on, particularly in use services, because we're looking at shelding and some other things and trying to create more spaces, is the idea that, you know, your collection size is one thing, but what you're really wanting to do is make sure that a certain percentage of your collection is being turned over every year. And I don't, and so what we're looking at is maybe eliminating, reducing the size of some of the collections to increase the turnover. So, and also kind of culling through things that may even sitting on the shelf but haven't been checked out for a long time. And so, and one of the things that they've done, they've done lots of studies on this, is that when your collection is a little bit smaller, when it's newer, when it's more attractive, when it's more, when it's shelved differently, when you've got face-out shelving, those kinds of things, the more displays you can have, the increase in circulation. You see an increase in circulation. So, you know, I'm working with both the department managers about how we can better showcase some of our collections in order to increase those circulation. But also then recognizing that circulation isn't kind of the be-all and end-all statistic that it once was, and that we need to be looking at other measurements of use.
I agree with that.
Do you do hourly events several times a year?
We don't do hourly ones. We do do, I mean, our gates do automated count. So we do, yeah, so we have count at any time, we can go and we can see that.
When I work at Niles, we keep track of interactions.
Right.
Like what kind of question was answered. And it's all computerized. It wasn't in person.
Dust tracker.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you want to see any further details.
At least I have a history that said dust tracker.
It probably doesn't say dust tracker. What it does is it lists, and again...
Oh, yeah, the questions and everything.
It tells you the type.
The other thing it does is there, there's two tabs. There's the questions and then there's like, not that it always gets done, but the idea is that every hour you're getting up and counting how many people are in.
Yeah, but I mean, we can look at that, but I don't think we're seeing that, but yeah, yeah. But we do use dust tracker, we use dust tracker here.
And there's just two tabs, activity and count. I was there on a Saturday, so I can see that.
Yeah, a dust tracker is nice actually because it's, for those of you who aren't librarians, it's actually, it's an internet-based resource that allows us to count and quantify and kind of qualify the reference questions that are asked at public service desks. And so you have a variety of things, you know, is it in-person, on the phone, email, text, whatever, you know, is it directional, typograph? I mean, there's some set, set categories, but things that you can add then. How long did it take you to answer it? You know, then there's all kinds of like other information that you can add. What did you need to answer it? That kind of thing. So it gives us the ability to really pull out some interesting information and useful information. Again, looking forward, thinking about the statistics and what's meaningful, the department managers and I will be talking a lot about that and also coming back to the board and saying, okay, beyond things that I need to know for employer and some of those things, what is the most, what are the meaningful statistics that you guys want to see? Because quite frankly, if I'm counting something and no one cares, why aren't I counting it? You know, if the state doesn't need it, if you guys don't need it, why are we counting it? But also, you know, just recognizing that there is some changes in the way that people are using our facility, and I want to be able to track that. Because if you do look at things like circulation counts, they're down everywhere. But it doesn't mean that we're less busy, because we're not. I mean, you know, people are in here and they're using us. When they're asking us questions, a lot of those things are requiring so much more staff interaction than they ever did before. So your staff time is being utilized in a completely different way than it used to be. So, so as we look at those statistics, and like, so one of my goals for next year is to completely revamp that. So all of those statistical, all of the statistics that I'm reporting on every month are meaningful for all of us. If that means your question mark.
Number seventy ten. You said your, you kind of see your report this week? Like the general one?
Okay.
You said we were able to decrease this line slightly.
Right.
Why? How?
Well, first of all, the renovation should mean that we don't need quite as much general maintenance, at least not the new floor.
You should find it as general maintenance, painting, landscaping, parking lot lease, which does go up every year.
It goes up next month.
Plowline and salt and other miscellaneous stuff. So it's, it's routine maintenance.
Right.
According to the estimate, we used it this year.
Yeah, we did. There were some things that happened this year too that were not necessarily anticipated. And I know some monies came out of this fund to pay for them. Like there was some maintenance that went with the bathroom renovations after they flooded again. Some of this money was because I made some decisions based on the amount of money we had left. So I did things like I replaced all the drinking components. And so that was, I think, $2,500 to replace all three of them, that kind of thing. So I was able to use this money because I knew it was already budgeted, but I know going forward, for example, I'm not going to have to replace a drinking components every year. You know, because that's a $2,500 cost right there. So I just know that there's some things that we're already taking care of this year because we have some money that we could expend. So I made that choice to do that this year rather than pushing that off to further, to another year, knowing I could decrease that by a little, knowing that we were going to have some other big expenses.
Number seventy twenty, I assume is where the, with the use services were...
Right. And as I said, in both of my pages, both of my packets of notes, both for my recommended increases, and then kind of give you an idea of what a flat 2% or 2.5% increase would That, anything over, kind of that flat increase will be extra that I am hoping that we could put towards improvements in the use services department. That is my goal. As I said, both for some safety reasons and some aesthetics reasons. And quite frankly, people love the renovation, and they're always disappointed when they get downstairs and they realize that some of that hadn't carried through to the use services department. Understanding completely that, you know, money wasn't issued, absolutely. So, you know, my goal is if we can make some changes to help bring, you know, improve the kind of aesthetic use of the department. They did. And I'm proud of myself for doing that.
She's right though, I heard from a lot of people.
It was just, you know, I mean...
I mean, they're not like, they're still coming, but...
Yeah, but it is the problem, was used there.
Yeah, you know, and so, like, and there's some, like I said, the shelving is certainly a safety issue. We do what we can. Yeah, if you, if you push it, it, we're very careful, but it would be nice to be able to get something.
No, it hasn't worked.
Yeah, so basically that line is going to be, you know, we've got some kind of minimums that we'll work with because there's always going to be some improvements that we'll need to do. It's just the cost of managing an increasingly aging facility. But anything above that certainly would be great and allow us to make whatever changes we could to use services to help, you know, kind of improve the look and feel of that.
The sixty-two hundred building, do we have any thoughts of what we're going to do with it?
Well, you know, that, that is, it's interesting, I had a really interesting conversation with Ron, our new IT person, new network administrator. Certainly that's up to the board. I know, you know, I'm aware of the issues with the cost of the sprinkler and some of the things that we had hoped to do with that building, weren't able to do because of the cost of just making it, bringing it up to code in order to have, you know, the public in it. I will be completely honest right now, we're using it as a big storage facility with a lot of old stock. So actually, Dave and I are going to be going over this week and kind of figure out what we can get rid of. We may even just get a small dumpster just to get rid of some things that, you know, we've just been having, you know...
I think we're already rid of all the chairs for our flooring.
So, so some of that stuff.
I would throw out the possibility. Yeah, this would be, I mean, this, this was purchased for a reason to enhance the library. If it's not enhancing the library at this point in time, wouldn't we be selling it? Seeing what's out there? We had bought it in a very depressed, I mean, yeah, seems a little bit better, I don't know.
That, I'm not, I think that...
Just floating in.
No, 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 that's up to the board. I don't have, I will actually, I will be completely honest, I don't have, I don't have a lot of thoughts on it yet. I have a few ideas. One of the things that Ron had come to me the other day, he's been on the job a couple weeks now, so we have our weekly meetings, and he had been over in that space for the first time sometime last week. And one of the things that he's going to be kind of putting together is a real broad proposal, outline of the potential idea was, I know we talked about little library body using it as, you know, meeting space, computer use space, that kind of thing. But Ron is thinking about taking it even a step further and not making it so, I mean, the library would certainly be responsible and kind of reap the benefits, if you will, but making it more of a maker space for the community, you know, having it be open different hours than the library, getting in private partnerships and that kind of thing, you know, doing computing, you know, hacking, I mean, all kinds of different things. I mean, he's really involved in a number of different computer technology organizations, and they talk a lot about these kinds of things. And so...
You could get outside money for it.
Exactly. And so that's, he's really thinking about making that more of a, you know, a private partnership, private collaborations, and really having it be, because he said, for example, he said, you know, he's got some computer, I mean, not PC, but computer beeps so they, you know, they're going to work and they work nine to five, but then they want to do their, you know, hacking or online gaming or playing. And this is just, could just be one potential use of that. I just, that's kind of, he was sort of an example. He said, they want to be able to do that after work and into the, late into the evenings. So why wouldn't we have something that's a separate facility that we wouldn't have to worry about keeping the rest of the library locked down, but we could say, you know what, here, this is open all night? Or it's open until 3:00 AM or something like that. But he said, you know, he said, there's some other possibilities if we kind of, you know, outside the box a little bit.
Make the reception desk into a bar.
It's really close to the bar. We made the relationship.
But the point being, so he's pulling together some ideas for me about that because I was really intrigued by that and I think that's a great idea.
One thing I can tell you is that I've heard from parents who would like to see more coding being taught at the school, and the school can facilitate. So if you're looking at those sorts of things, not just the adults.
Right, for everyone, but to use that. But I think, I mean, he was really pushing, you know, make that more of, you know, private industry collaboration.
What would you bless?
I, I kind of, sort of, but, so I think that, I think we, I think there's some potential. I think we have to, we have to decide, and the, that the board would have to decide, is it worth hanging on to, bringing up to code, you know, looking at how much would it cost us to create something that would allow us to make this kind of bigger maker space and, you know, will be associated with the library, but...
The PR would be...
Would be amazing.
It would.
I mean, and, you know, we would pull some of the primaries.
We have some alternatives of what to do, and I don't think the board should go get closing it down without some suggestions.
I think right now, right, how it could be, right. So I think right now, and I think, you know, things have settled down a little bit, if you will. I mean, you know, I, so I, but it's, you know, I mean, I think some of the kind of, you know, the big, the big changes in personnel, those have gone through, they're, in terms of that, we feel pretty stable. You know, renovation is done, bathroom remodel is done, all of that, that is done. So, and right now, it doesn't really cost us anything to keep it. So, but I, but absolutely, I mean, I think that that has to be on the table as opposed to what, what potentially could we make? What could potentially we use it for? What would it cost us to turn into something usable?
My other thought too, if you sold that and had a profit, you had the money, you've got three crumbier buildings here that you would hope eventually we could grab, which even if you use them for parking, we're going to be paying $1,000 a month.
Starting next one.
And it's all brand new, you're going to put it here. So, that's just, just a thought.
No, absolutely. I think that all of that needs to be on the table. But I think that, like I said, I'm, I'm really intrigued by that. I think we need to put all those things on the table and say, you know, here's what we could potentially get if we tried to sell it. You know, I don't know what the market would be, what it could bear. I mean, I know that right down the street, there's another building that's for sale. You know, I, I...
It has been for a long time.
Exactly. So I don't know, you know, I don't know, and I don't know that, but I, you know, certainly we would, we would want to start looking into those things so that we can make some decisions going forward.
One of the things we might think about is picking a mutual Saturday morning when we can all get together for three or four hours and toss some of these ideas around. You know, kind of like just a day away.
Yes.
And just bring up ideas. They're all good.
That was a very large investment, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
There's different ways for the incubators. Business incubators, and there really isn't one in this area. The first one I know of is in Evans.
Scoping, scoping.
And I think there's something, you know, and the thing is, is that that space is, that could be part of, parcel all of this, you know, we could do coding, we could do, you know, kind of maker spaces, business incubators sort of thing. But to have that there, and it gives us some unique opportunities in that we aren't, we don't have to keep this building open to have that building be open. And depending on what we do with it, it might be, you know, less oversight than, you know, you wouldn't need a full staff like you do in this building, that kind of thing. But I think that there is some potential there. We just need to balance, we just need to look at that and say, is it worth it for us to move forward? Can we feasibly financially do that? Or would it be better in our, for our long-term?
My own feeling is I'd rather see it used for library purposes. I just want to throw that out there so that it's out there.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, you're exactly, absolutely right, Paul. It has to be on the table.
I used to, it used to be, I understand complaints from West End, Morton Road, that nobody pays attention to that. Why wouldn't we?
Um, you know, it's interesting. We try very hard.
Because I have friends that live over there.
We try very hard, you know, we, we're working, we're trying, we work with schools a lot. You know, we're trying to do outreach to them. It's interesting that you should say that though because of this meeting that I just went to with the, you know, Ralph from the Village and Jeff from the Park District. And there were three school superintendents there, all the various school districts. And one of the complaints that they're seeing as well is from the west side of town. And so I think that it's, it's a challenge for all of us, you know, if our headquarters are on the east side of town. And some of that's location. You know, I've only gone back now six months or whatever, but it just...
Considering it's three and a half miles across town.
I know. It's so obvious though, because of the forest preserve and the tracks.
The train tracks, yes.
Which are in my living room, actually.
But I think, you know, I've had some different thoughts. We're going to be doing some different promotions. We've been talking about that for, like, going into next year, like, you know, design contests for the library card and maybe doing some artwork in the children's department or whatever. Things that we can encourage people from, you know, both the east and west side of town to do. You know, I had a thought that, you know, one of the things, one of the, one of the statistics that I am really bothered by, that I think is, is one that we do need to be thinking about, is how many people in town have library cards? And so one of my thoughts was potentially next year, just mailing everyone a library card. We know everyone's in town, we know they're paying us to us. Yeah, why not try something like that? I mean, so I'm trying, you know, we're trying to think of different things. I mean, it has its pluses and minuses. I'm not sure we'll do that yet, but I mean, there's some different things that we could potentially try to do. I've not heard that so much this time around, so I'll, you know, I can, I'll check with staff and see what kind of feedback we've been getting.
Yeah, I think the idea was set on a temporary target.
Right, there's a lot of that.
You could use it once or twice or something.
But, you know, my, my thinking is, we already know, I mean, that's one of the advantages of being like more global. I mean, I, I can tell exactly where my boundaries are. I don't have, I don't have to worry about the non-resident population too much. I can pretty much tell, you know, who's here. I know those people are paying taxes.
You would figure out who doesn't have them, right? Like you would mail me one.
Right. Exactly, exactly, yeah, and I've got, I can do that, yeah, we would do that. We would look at who already has one and who doesn't, just mail it to them. Say it's good for a year. So, I mean, one of the things that's always kind of bothered me is, you know, we talk a lot about in the library world about, you know, oh, like staying relevant and people using us and, and all those different things and, and, um, but then we have so many hoops I have to jump through sometimes. So I, and I'd like to minimize the barriers to people using us as much as we can within our, you know, as much as we, if we can.
It's trash.
And my, trust me, as I, I get to coffee, I've been coming and going to work every day.
You can't imagine how noisy those trains are.
So out by where I live, they actually had, um, there was one train track, and at least this one's all commuter. So by where I was, it was a freight train. I've never ridden a public freight train.
I have fifteen on Friday night.
Yeah, so there's a, there was one that was a public freight train constantly, and they, they finally built the road over the tracks.
Yeah.
And so as I was sitting there like the tracks, I thought, they need to do this.
It's never going to happen here.
But, but so, well, I answered your question, I'm sorry, but, um, we're trying to stay cognizant of that and certainly if any of you out in the community hear about things like that, certainly let me or, you know, anyone know so that we can, and bring it to my attention so we can work on making sure that we're addressing that as much as we can.
Uh, one of the things, just as a thought, when, if there's going to be any reconstructing in use services, you got to keep Andy Cap in mind, the distance between shelves, et cetera.
Yep, yep, that's, that's a big issue down there.
Once we started with it, we have to do it all.
Yep.
And they're watching us.
Yes.
Whoever they are.
Well, you know, the, the thing is about use services departments is that, um, Hinkip also has the advantage of then you can stroll over something down the aisles too. So, but yeah, exactly, you're exactly right. Yeah, once we start making those changes, we have to.
You don't see again seven forty, seven sixty, seventy, sixty, seventy, sixty-one, eighty, eight thousand, eight ten, et cetera. All of these, there could be plus or minus raises.
There could be. Um, these have stayed fairly stable for the past several years.
Okay.
So, um.
So they're about to get us.
Hopefully not, um, you know, there is.
Postage, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Postage changes every week, right?
Postage is going up.
But, um.
It's always going up.
Yeah, so these are fairly stable and, and, and these are rounded. So usually what I've tried to do in revenues, I try to round down because I always assume I'm not going to get as much as I hoped for. And when I look at expenses, I try to round up because I always figure things are going to, so, you know, it says fourteen thousand, it probably is closer to thirteen thousand, but I want to give myself at least enough room that I don't have to.
Village and miscellaneous work.
Mm-hmm.
The numbers are weird.
Okay, so my.
These values is eighty-one fifty.
Yeah, I, I know on your, yes, so the ones before the other, sorry.
No, that's okay. I just kept the low.
Yeah, I did the other day and I was.
I was really busy being fussy.
Yep, yeah, I know, I, those are flip flops, so my apologies for that.
Are you going to walk these when we go?
You can keep them?
So we got operations or whatever going up by about seventy thousand, special fees and taxes, da-da-da, going up about nine thousand. And then we got eight thousand on personnel sub-toll. So you're accounting for most of the increase. And a three percent. For the board meeting, which I'm sure we're going to continue talking about this. Can we kind of classify this into some major cost drivers so that we can actually tell public this is what's forcing us to do whatever?
Sure. So when you say major cost drivers, um, like the generator and use services. I mean, you want those.
There's some, there's avoidable, there's avoidable costs, there's unavoidable costs.
So kind of what I wrote in here, but maybe something a little bit more centered.
Yeah, really simple. So that my sixth grader can understand. Because one of the things that I do here from people is, how long's the library going to be around and we don't use it? And then, you know, I got everything on my phone and, you know, that's the, the naysayers are always louder than anybody else.
I know.
I'm glad you're going to try to get the whole staff to be in it.
Yeah, it's, um.
The chair.
It would be.
Yeah, I know it's here.
You can take the train.
It's not, but boy, they have hours to work.
So just kind of a, a synopsis, if you will, of this would be?
I, you know, if we're going to move forward with anything, you know, there's, there's some causation by the government, you know, that's changing the way we have to account for salaries, which is increasing some of the load.
Some of the inside of the, what's going on with tires.
Yeah, I mean, it's just there and like it or not, we have to do this.
I think talk about the shelving.
Right.
And the lights, generator, shelving lights.
And who in town knows that you replaced all the drinking fountains so that there was no chance we would be imparting lead up on our trip?
Good point.
Yeah.
Um, no one as of this point, but I will make my top of it up.
And, uh, the ideas of, some of the ideas about rating meetings and things like that, that's doable right now.
And I think the, the Chamber of Commerce would welcome it even at the library.
Okay.
We can arrange it.
I'm surprised that you didn't say that.
I can pretty much pull it out.
Um, so if I pull some things together, can I send you, we're going to draft and let me know if that's what you're thinking?
Yeah.
And then so I, so that I can have something prepared then.
Yep.
So besides that, is there any other numbers anyone wants to see? Is there anything else you want me to do?
I'm going to look at it in great detail and I would encourage all the other trustees to do the same thing. And if you're uncomfortable with a certain amount, I think you've got a breakout where it's two, three, four, whatever.
Right.
You kind of circle what you feel strongly about.
You know, and certainly, and when, we can do this again, and I know we didn't do it this time, but, you know, one of the things that we can do is, is I have all of this in my spreadsheet, so if we want to plug in different numbers so we can see what that looks like, you know, I, it's not to say that you don't end up with the two point six five nine percent and you know, that kind of thing.
Two point six five is better than three.
Right, exactly.
Paul's got a good point that we might be a beneficiary to some point.
Right, so, but keep in mind again that what we're looking at is just the dollar amount.
Yeah.
That we're asking the village to levy for us and that, and that, A, we don't have to, but I always try to run a balanced budget because the other thing is that we have very little in reserves right now in terms of what I feel comfortable with.
Yeah, we're clicking.
So I would just caution you, if you have questions about things, just remember that you can't email the group because of open meetings, that if you have questions, um, you can send them to me and that it's something for everyone I can send them on. Or if you just have specific questions that you just want to ask me or want something, want me to prepare something before the next board meeting, they happen to do that.
As younger families are moving in, I think a better looking use services department.
So maybe I'm speculating that a little bit.
Something.
I think we should just tell them it's not really Facebook.
Yeah.
Lower level.
One of the places if you have people that are moving, which is surprising, is into Katniss, the condos.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it used to be they were all people that were twice my age, which is hard to beat. Uh, now I, I see you should, the school bus let them all go, about fifteen kids walking up the street.
So.
And that was just one school bus. Who knows, probably others.
Just, um, and I'm, I'm either way, whatever the board wants to do, um, the October board meeting is pretty full because of this and Brian LaFever from Sickich, who is our auditor, will be out because now that the actuarial report is done, um, they actually completed our audit. So he'll be reporting on the twenty fifteen audit and then back probably sometime in April to do our twenty sixteen audit. But, um, so he's going to be here or one of his representatives, Sickich, will be here that evening as well. And then we've got some other, um, I think there'll be a lot of, uh, items on the agenda. There, most of them won't take that long, but it will be a fairly full meeting. So the only reason I throw that out there is, do you feel the need to have another special board meeting regarding the budget before that?
Or do we want to, do we meet a half an hour earlier instead of, like people wanted to do that?
Also, we some point.
We could. I'm fine with that, so.
Meeting earlier or?
If you want to, if you want to have a budget meeting prior to the board meeting.
Whatever the board wants to do.
Let's do that.
I'm fine with that. I'll make a special board meeting.
So you want to have another special meeting, Paul?
Just, let's schedule it just in case.
Okay, so, um.
So not meet early, have a different meeting entirely?
Budget meeting, if we break up for fifteen minutes, then we'll start the other one.
Okay, so this is, so we're talking about the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Meeting like at six thirty.
Seems like that, I think.
Okay, oh, so you want to have a special meeting before the regular meeting about the budget? Is that what you, I just want to be clear.
I think I'm leaning, I thought that's what I thought I heard, Steph.
Yeah, then I couldn't tell what you were saying.
So maybe, maybe on the thirteenth, which is the night of our regular meeting, we meet at six? Does that, or is that too late or too early? You want to meet at six thirty?
Okay.
What do you, what do you feel like? I'm, I mean, I'm in town, it's.
I'm fine.
I do know that you won't be there.
No, I will be here.
Oh, okay.
I'm leaving in the morning.
Okay, okay.
I'll be fine, okay.
I'm fine.
So I would say six, just, just.
Just in case?
Exactly, and that way if, if we meet and use, and everyone says, no, Pam, we like two point five or it's two percent and make it happen or whatever, then you can go with the dollars.
Yeah, that's all right, okay. Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
So October thirteenth, we'll have a special board meeting at six. And then our regular board meeting will start at seven, because that would reuse everything.
I should. I have enough that Bill's not here, but I think that's actually, no, I'm not correct. I can get a babysitter, I'll try and get a babysitter, it's not, I'll let these.
Which is what you want.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll have to get a babysitter anyways. I'm here.
Okay, so the thirteenth.
I think you should bring the kids here.
Oh, you, you'd enjoy that.
Special board meeting at six, just to discuss the budget, regular board meeting at seven, which will be the audit, continuation of any budget stuff.
Yeah.
Tell them to.
Awesome. Um, do you want to officially adjourn?
Motion to adjourn this one?
So, one second.
Second, all in favor?
I'm going to.
This is later adjourned at eight o'clock.